Maybe we're in Des Moines, Iowa.
Is that a joke?
I think I saw last time, is it on? Y'all hear that? Still not on. I'll tell the story. Last time I heard someone talk about duh, boy. I've been on say that. There's a mayor there too. You'll probably say something about me now. Okay, are we hot yet?
It's working. I don't know why the speaker's unplaying.
Uh oh.
We are streaming though.
We are streaming live. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started anyway. It's 5:30. We're gonna get started. You can probably tell if you showed up tonight. There's a lot of folks here. Now we have a special event here in just a few minutes. And when somebody was telling me earlier, he says, "If you're gonna do something bad tonight, it's not the place, this is not the place to do it tonight." There are more guns in this room than you can imagine. But we have a special event and we're really proud of our new chief. We'll be chief for just a moment. He's just sworn in. And we're excited because he brought a lot of his compadres, his friends, and people he's worked with over the years. And we're excited that you've been here today. So we'll begin by pledge of allegiance and Councilman Huckabee will lead the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
That's what happened.
The screen guy let me down a little bit. All I have to know is the first word.
Well, Carl gotta start there.
I taught seventh grade history for a while.
There you go. Pastor Ed Didfirst from the Cornerstone Assembly of God Church will lead us in invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all, your council members. I saw all of our law enforcement here and I wanted to say something kind to them and thank them for their service. And I didn't want to leave you guys out. And so I looked at the words of Christ in Matthew 5 and it said, "Blessed are the peacemakers." But the very next verse says, "Blessed are those who are persecuted." So, thank you, thank you, law enforcement. Thank you, city council.
Put your weight. We can draw our own conclusion.
We better pray. Father, thank you for this community. Thank you for the city of champions. Thank you for this special night tonight where we will honor and swear in a new police chief. And I just pray for the continued success in this community. I pray your blessing on these city council members and our mayor that serve the public and do it because they care about the community we live. We ask for your help and guidance and wisdom. And I pray all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Ed, for those visitors tonight. I want you to know that the Ministry Alliance prays for our city council every, before every meeting, but they also pray for us every week where they get together and they mention each of us individually by name. And I appreciate what you guys do, really do. Alright, we have a special guest. His name is Dan M. Harris, Senior. He's gonna do a swearing in. He's gonna do a penning here in a minute. And so we have a new police, we'll be a new police chief, Dan M. Harris, Junior. And Stacy, let's come up here and let's get this on the ropes. We have a, we have a real police chief. I imagine Jason's ready to get rid of that badge. I asked him, I said, "You're not gonna give him a badge?" And he said, "Not mine."
If you will raise your right hand, please, for a repeat after me. I, Dan M. Harris, Junior.
Aye, Dan M. Harris, Junior.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of police chief of the city of Steenfield.
Of police chief of the city of Steenfield.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm gonna give Dan an opportunity. You wanna say something to the crowd here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Give an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, Alan, we didn't make you swear in like that.
No, sir. I've been sworn at.
Oh, okay.
Pursued.
If you use right here, fine. However you want to do it.
No, so first, it's all about family and protecting those who love those of us who wear the uniforms. And so, for me, God, my family, and the law enforcement profession. And I dedicated every single minute of my life to making this profession the greatest profession in the world. And so I wouldn't be here and standing here right now if it wasn't for everyone that's wearing a uniform and those who aren't here today helping me get here. And so, I love every one of you and my new family, the city of Steenfield, will do everything every day to protect and serve with nothing less than a top-notch professional law enforcement officer. So, all the best. And those who are traveling, safe travels home, especially with the weather. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, all of you who wear a badge or who've worn a badge, thank you for your service as well. Thank you for your safe, for your travels here today. It's an important thing for us to celebrate with you. Also, be careful going home. There's a bunch of cops out there. It's gonna be bad weather. They don't make the rest when it gets cold? Now, this is coming from an attorney who represents us. Alright, I texted him the other day and he didn't respond. I said, "That's the phone that you use with all your clients that you don't, that don't pay your bills."
Go phone.
There you go. Go, go phone. Okay. Alright, there you go. Thank you all very much. There's gonna be some, if y'all want to, we go back to the training room. There's some, for pictures back there. If someone, anybody in the crowd wants to go with, get some pictures along with the new police chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all.
Back to normal now.
Back to normal.
Nobody out there.
Alright, we're back to the usual city council meeting now. Alright, well, we're gonna move on to item number five, regular agenda, Senate's general discussion. Is there anyone who's signed up to like to address the city council tonight? If it is, make sure you fill out the form. You got three minutes. Hearing none, we'll go on to the next item, which is consider approval of ordinance 2020-oh...
Oh, four.
Oh, four. Order of special election and sports venue tax. Alan?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at a couple of off-site council meetings, we've discussed the sports venue hotel occupancy tax, which is a two percent, an additional two percent of the, on, to the current hotel motel tax that is used to fund strictly sports facilities. The, the venue tax can only be used for certain things such as baseball fields, basketball courts, recreation-type facilities, the maintenance of those, and the development of new ones. We have reached out to the, or sent the paperwork to the state comptroller's office. They have approved their portion of us permitting us to call the special election. And this is simply the next step.
One of the good things about this extra two cents is it didn't cost the citizens any money.
Unless it's that hotel.
Unless you bring your family in for a reunion or something. Most of the, this comes from visitors coming to town. So that's, it's good for us to get everybody, everybody else's tax money.
That's correct.
That's correct. Also, I wanna say thanks to Glenn Hager for rushing this through and getting it through so we can get this on the ballot like we, like we want. Anybody have any comments?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2020-oh-four, ordering a special election on a sports venue tax.
I'll second.
Brandon makes motion and Mark takes it. Further discussion? Proceed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, tax increment reinvestment zone number one. We're gonna enter into a public hearing. And Karen, you're gonna make it, well, I tell you what, before we do that, would you like to introduce your newest employees in the room here with us?
Yes, sir. Yesterday was a very monumental day for the city. Not only did Chief Harris start with the city, but Steve Killen became our new development services director. Steve, stand up. Steve comes to us from the city of Garland. He has vast experience in most of the aspects of development services. And we're just really excited to have Steve's knowledge and expertise on the team.
Glad you're here.
Glad you're here.
We'll enter into city, into a public hearing on this. City council, Steenfield's considering the advisability of the expansion of a tax increment zone number one to Steenfield for tax increment financing purposes pursuant to chapter 311 tax code, Texas tax, tax code. Who can make the presentation?
That'll be Natalie from the Pettit Group.
Okay. They send the smart one with the group app. I always say that. I know she does.
And would you have a presentation? Hold it, hold up. Alright, thank you. Well, my name is...
There you go.
Hello. My name is Natalie Moore and I'm with David Pettit, Economic Development. I'm here with my colleague, David Pettit. And we're here from Fort Worth to talk about the proposed expansion of TERS number one. To give you some background information, this TERS number one was created last year, April 25th, by ordinance. And it had the term terminating in December 31 of 2045. In July of that same year, the TERS was expanded. As you can see on the slide, the original TERS boundaries are outlined in red. And then the second expansion, or the expansion was, is outlined in blue. And those were about, let's see here, about eight acres along Harbin Road was the first expansion. Today, we're here to propose a second expansion to further expand the boundaries, but we are not proposing a term expansion. This is just to expand the boundaries. The boundaries that we are proposing to expand is TERS 1B is what we're calling it. And that is the outline here in purple. You can see it also runs along Harbin Road. It does, it is directly adjacent to TERS 1A. It runs about just north of Northwest Loop and the intersection of Northwest Loop and West, you'll have to, excuse me, is it Lingle, Lingaville Road? And it goes all the way south, just past 377. The amendment process for a TERS is very similar to the creation process. You need to do an amendment to the creation ordinance and then present an amended project and financing plan. The amended creation ordinance will establish five key elements. The boundary, the term, which we are not proposing to change, TERS board, and again, we're not proposing to change the members of the board, city participation, there's no change there, and a preliminary amended project and financing plan. After the creation ordinance, which is up for your consideration right now, the amended project and financing plan would need to be reviewed by the board and be recommended for approval. And then the city council would need to approve by ordinance the amended project and financing plan by a separate ordinance. Mr. Barnes asked us to organize this information and I'm glad he did because it really shows the progression of the TERS. As I mentioned, you created the TERS last year in 2019. And it's important to note that the year in which the TERS is created, that establishes the base year. And what that means is that that's the base value of which increment will then further be measured against in the future. So TERS 1 and TERS 1A, which again, TERS 1 is the red boundaries that we saw, TERS 1A is the blue boundaries. Those both have a base value of 2019 because that is when those ordinances were passed. TERS 1B, which is for consideration today, is going to have a 2020 base year. So there will be, in your administration, differentiation there between TERS 1, 1A, and then 1B with the base year values. And you can see TERS 1B does have a larger base value than the others, which is what is really driving the increment that you will see, the change. So, the total anticipated TERS revenue has gone from 24 million to 24.1, to now we're at 24.9, if you will. There's only a change of TERS revenue of 734,000 based on this, that's what this will, this proposed amendment will produce. And that is only based on a 2% growth rate of the base. We're not projecting, we're being very conservative. We're not projecting any anticipated new development right now within the TERS 1B boundaries, all, even though there are some parcels there that could be redeveloped or developed. But to be conservative and not overestimate our anticipated TERS revenue, we, we only grew the base. So, with that, keeping the 25-year term of the TERS, the participation of the city of Steenfield would be 23.1. The Steven, the CETA board would still have their participation only in TERS 1. So only, they're only participating, subject to the inter-local agreement with the sales tax participation within the original TERS boundaries. And so that gets you right to that 24.9 million. What that TERS revenue will be spent on, we have not altered how those, the menu of options for what that money can be spent on in the future. It's a list of public improvements. It's not dedicating the money per se to any of these particular categories, but it gives you the option to be able to spend money on any of these categories. Again, any sort of TERS agreement would have to go before the TERS board and then again, city council. So it's a, as David likes to say, two-step, "Mother, may I?" Before anything actually gets pledged. Again, these categories are just listed in the project and financing plan to help guide you as to what you could spend that money on in the future. So with that, the next steps are the creation ordinance that is in front of you today, the amendment to the creation ordinance. And then, there would need to be a TIF board approval, a recommend approval of the PFP, project and, project and financing plan, which is also scheduled for today. And then city council final PFP ordinance, which is scheduled for later on the agenda today as well. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? You did a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody wanna come in and talk in favor of the project? And wanna talk in opposition to the proposal? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing then and move on to item number two, consider approval of ordinance number 2020-oh...
Zero five.
Zero five.
So moved, sir.
Mark makes the motion and Carla, you second it?
Yes.
And Carla seconded it? Any further discussion? Proceed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. We'll temporarily suspend the city council now and enter into a tax increment financing zone board of directors meeting. So, we have, where's our...
Chris.
There we go, Chris. For those who are, don't, don't know, we're, the, our TIF board is made up of city council and two members of the CETA board. And Chris is one of our members. The other member wasn't able to be here tonight. So, we'll convene into the TIF board. So how do we wanna handle this? I guess we just vote on it, Karen, Stacy? There we go.
So what is up for your consideration is approval of the final project and financing plan. The preliminary project and financing plan was attached as an exhibit to the ordinance, which is, which was just passed by city council. And I outlined the changes to the project and financing plan in my previous presentation. The main changes being the expansion of the boundaries and an increase of TERS revenue of approximately 734,000.
Any further questions? Board members? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Gerald makes the motion to approve, for the board directors to approve the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one amendments. So that's Gerald. And was that Mark?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Well, we will now reconvene into regular city council. Chris, thanks.
Stimulating discussion, Chris.
It was. For those who are on, just watching on television, all this material's been passed out. Everybody's been reading this for months. You know, and so, over the weekend particularly, lots of, you and I, we all had lots of conversations out of the weekend. So, this isn't just a quick thing, but it's official that way. Alright, we're back in the city council meeting and consider approval of ordinance number 2020-oh-five, right?
Oh, six.
Oh, six. Amendment to project and financing plan TERS number one.
I will make that motion to amend, sir.
Mark makes the motion.
Second.
Ricky seconds it? Further discussion? Proceed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you all for doing it.
Thank you all.
And thanks for putting up with me over the weekend. What are we, at 10:00 a.m. back in Florida?
I was at the rodeo, so.
It really didn't matter.
Bye, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Chris.
Okay, item, item number seven, racial profiling report. Ex-Chief King.
Mr. Mayor, council. Do what?
You're out of uniform.
Yes, I am.
It was really funny to watch this, wipe the rest of him upstairs. He'll make sure his towels on all that stuff.
As you know, each year, the department is required to present a racial profiling report to you before March 1st. And so that is what you have, that has been turned into you. Once again, it was done by Dr. Alex Del Carmen. And I'll take any questions you guys have about the report.
Any questions? Y'all seen the report?
I've, I've got one, 'cause I think I've asked this before, Chief, but, I'm sorry, Jason. Let me take a while. Not say that.
Ron Piper, he could blood.
Yeah, I could. So, this is actually page 24 of 76, it looks like. It's table six. And, and I think it, this one is the one that just kinda jumps out at you, but it probably is in there. I guess my question is, is this state-mandated format the way these tables are presented?
Yes, sir, it is. That is actually dictated by the state of Texas.
'Cause I mean, when you, when you just look at this table at face value, the numbers that are presented in the way they're presented, the order that they're presented across the street, across the screen, right, left to right, and it just, it's just so confusing.
Which, which table again, council?
It is table six, which is search data.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, you can sit there and look at it and figure out what they're doing. It just seems so convoluted, the way this is actually presented. 'Cause the numbers don't, you look across and the numbers don't add up. And you're like, what's going on?
Right. Well, and the first table there is total number of searches.
Right.
Next table is those searches where there either was contraband or evidence found or not. And then those that were arrested out of those searches. And they have to do a breakdown percentage-wise on each of those categories.
Okay. But it's state mandated. The, the way the table is set up is state mandated?
Oh. I don't know if the actual layout that you see, but I think that's one of the easier ways for them to put it all in one table.
Well, I mean, if you just look at, it's like to go to that first line there, you've got 79 total searches. And then out of, and that's 62% of the total searches that were conducted.
Yes, sir.
And then you've got 39 where contraband, contraband was found, and that's 64%.
Yes, sir.
And then you go to the next line, contraband not found, 40, and that's 60%. So you just, when you look at the table that way, you've got 124%. If you don't go to the bottom and see what the total is, and then come back up and divide it out.
Right. The percentage on... Right. The percentage on each set of tables is its own individual data.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I figured it out.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm just saying, it just, it just, you look at that and you go like, wow, okay, good enough.
Any other questions?
Also, as, as part of that, if you'll see attached, there was, so Chief, you doesn't have to come up, there's one for the Stephenville Fire Department, they are exempt because they do not make any traffic stops, but they are required by law to file a report saying they're exempt and also present that to you. So you have the police department, that's the full report, and then the fire department sets the exempt law. And that covers everything state law requires.
I'm assuming we have to approve or accept, officially accept the report or not?
I, I would recommend it, yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to do that?
I make a motion that we approve the report as presented.
Second. Carl makes the motion, Mark seconds it? Any further discussion? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion, accept the report, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Request for voluntary annexation, number, item number eight, during a public hearing. So who's going to make the presentation?
Jason, you going to do that or am I?
I got it.
If y'all remember from a couple of weeks ago, we discussed this in committee. This is the property at the edge of town at 281 and 8 that belongs to Mr. Burgeon, that has gone through the, the process through the economic development authority for the extension of the water line. When the grant was requested for economic development funds and then it came before council, y'all approved that. And so as part of that agreement was a request for voluntary annexation to the city. And so that's what we're doing tonight. It meets all the steps in the law. We have the request, we've done a development plan for services and now you're holding the public hearing. And after that, we are ready to vote on the ordinance.
Okay. Any questions?
I just have a statement, I asked this in committee and I just want to repeat it for those of you watching, it doesn't obligate us to run sewer lines out there because he has a sewer system in plot.
A septic system, yes.
A septic system. So I just, it doesn't obligate us to put out funds for sewer.
No, ma'am.
Anybody else? During a public hearing, is anybody want to come speak in favor of the annexation request? Hearing now, if anybody want to come speak in opposition? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing, we'll enter into discussion then, consider approval of ordinance number 202007.
Yes, sir.
Annexing 3.34 acres of the Williams survey, A0804.
I make a motion of approval of ordinance number 202007, annexing 3.340 acres of the Williams survey.
Second that.
Brandon, Brandon makes the motion and Gerald seconds it? Any further discussion? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Next item, planning and zoning commission. Karen, I want to say to everybody here, in front of everybody here, you've done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and I want you to know that we appreciate you a lot.
I appreciate that.
Amen. Very much.
So case number PD 2020-001. Applicant Plaza Park Properties LLC is requesting a development plan for a rezone of property located at 2741 West Washington, being lot two, block 148 of the city addition to the city of Stephenville, E wrath county, Texas, from our three multiple family zone to a PD planned development. I'm going to tie these two in, I know you have to do them separate, but the next case, PD 2020-002, is the same property and the same, it's a different property, same project. They're all going to be rezoned to a PD. So on case 2020-01, planning and zoning commission met and recommended approval by unanimous vote. They have submitted their development plan, their concept plan, their development schedule, and they have also submitted their repl.
Any questions for, for Karen? Okay, we'll enter a public hearing, is anybody want to come and speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone want to come and speak in opposition? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing, consider approval of ordinance number 202008. Rezoning the property located at 2741 West Washington, being lot number two, block 148 of the city addition to planned development district.
I make a motion of approval of ordinance 202008, rezoning the property located at 2714 West Washington to a planned development, for multifamily to planned development.
Second.
Okay. Brandon makes the motion and Alan seconds it? Any further discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If my memory is correct, at P and Z, there was a discussion of some screening along one side between this property and I think the school property. Does that need to be included in this discussion or?
It's part of their planned development, so we address the screening, it's going to be between the project and the residential, but it doesn't have to be between the school and the property that's being developed.
Okay. So that's addressed in their schedule already?
Yes, sir, in their planned development, it's listed out, when their screening will be.
And I believe they've talked to the school district, there's an understanding between them and the school district, if they need to have something there, that they'll work that out, so.
Yes, between them.
Between themselves.
We met Mr. Underwood, Mr. Underwood's thoughts on it, where it is best handled between the district and property owner, not through planning, zoning, or council action.
I agree with that wholeheartedly because they are going to be neighbors and, and they need to resolve that to both of them satisfaction, I believe. Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Go to the public hearing on case number PD 202002. We've had a description, or do we need to go, Brandon, we have to have a more description, do we? We're not going to have a description unless our attorney said so. So we're going to go ahead and ask questions, we're getting into a public hearing, anybody want to talk in favor of the proposal? Anybody want to talk in opposition? We'll close the public hearing and enter into, consider approval of ordinance number 202009, rezoning a property being lot three, block one of the Lake Granberry Developers Edition, city of Stephenville, E wrath county, from real tell, from retail to commercial business, B2 to planned development district.
So moved.
Second.
Mark makes the motion. Did you second that, Carla?
Yes.
Carla seconds it? Any further discussion? Hearing now, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Items numbers five, six, and seven have been, six, seven, and eight have been polled from the agenda tonight.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. We're going to proceed to committee minutes. Okay, there we go. This is printed on the front and back, okay. Tourism, Mr. Russell.
Mr. Mayor, the tourism committee met and we had three grant considerations. The first was for a request, tongue type, a request for hot front funds from Charlton State University FFA Invitational Judging Contest. It was for $3,500. Both the Tourism Advisory Board and the Tourism Committee of the Council recommended that this be approved by the full council. So I will make that motion that we approve the $3,500 of hot funds to Charlton's FFA Invitational Judging Contest.
Carla makes the motion, did you second that, Brandon? Any further discussion?
I, I just want to say that we've talked about how we're mandating that and I know we're getting somewhere, but we're still not quite there yet.
But we're working on it.
So, so we're working on it. I just, my votes will reflect that, so.
Further discussion? Hearing now, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
No.
Roll call vote? Place one?
Aye.
I didn't, sorry. Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Nope.
Place six?
Aye.
Place seven?
No.
Place eight?
No.
Okay, motion passes eight to three. Next item.
All right.
Five to three.
There's eight, I counted all eight of them, brother. There you go. Five is real, I can make that so, they did in Ohio, or Iowa. And then they have something like twice as many people vote as what they had in citizens, something like that.
You thought it was Democrat.
You thought it was Democrat, there you go. Okay, Carla.
I'm sorry.
Item number two.
Okay. The next item was a request of $8,000 from the horde dog team roping. It came forward with a positive recommendation from the Tourism Advisory Board for $1,000, not 8,000, they approved 1,000. But when it came to committee, the committee did not wish to fund this event, so it comes to the full council with a negative recommendation. So I would make the motion that we do not approve hot funds for the horde dog team roping.
Second.
Carla makes the motion, Brandon seconds it? Any further discussion? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion, the motion passes to not recommend it. It's like a double negative there.
Okay.
Is that right, Randy?
So we're not going to fund it?
We're not going to fund it, that's why we voted on it.
All right.
Item number three.
Item number three was for the CC 5D barrel race series. That request for was, was for $11,000. The advisory board made a negative recommendation for funding this and the city council tourism committee also made a negative recommendation to full council, so I'll make that motion that we do not fund the CC 5D barrel race series.
Second. Carla makes the motion and Brady seconded. Further discussion? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? So that we affirmatively decided not to fund it again.
Okay. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Planning and Development Committee Services, Brandon Hookaby.
All right. On January 21st, the committee met and discussed a request from Habitat for Humanity to waive fees. The request was for approximately 3,800. After discussion was held, we made a motion to approve up to $1,020 with a couple of requirements, 180 of that 1,020 was for landfill, which is equivalent of three tons. And then the rest was to permit fees, so that wasn't to touch enterprise fund materials. And we, so I will make the motion to approve one, up to 1,020 in total fees being waived with 108, up to 180 of those in landfill fees and the rest must be applied towards permitting fees.
Second that.
Very much, makes the motion, Gerald seconds it? Any discussion? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes.
And that is it.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Leisure Services Committee and Mr. Robinson.
Sir, on January?
They go something song.
On January 21st, we met, had a presentation from Perimeter Lighting Detection System concerning lightning detection for the park. Currently, there's not a, a system for the park where, that makes an announcement for lightning. This would cover the entire park and it, it's a collaboration with SISD. Funding for this does come out of the park grant fee. This does come with a, our park development piece, excuse me, this does come with a positive recommendation and I would be willing to make that as a motion.
Second.
Then makes the motion and Alan's at you? Alan seconds it? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee, Mr. Pendleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We held a meeting and discussed two exciting issues, one which was to admit a $25 municipal court fine for those that failed to appear. That was a new legislative change, allowed municipalities to do that. After discussion, that motion was passed unanimously. In addition to that, there was an amendment brought forward to change the parking restrictions on the 1500 block of K Street due to some new, like some apartments, things over there that allows for better access and some better movement of traffic. And so, of course, that was considered as well and was passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor. So at this time, I would make a motion that we preordinate number 202010 municipal court fee.
Second. Very much, motion, Nick seconds it? Any discussion? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Next item was?
The, next one was the amendment to parking schedules and at this time, Mr. Mayor, I moved with preordinance number 202011, amendment to parking schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, you second it? Very much, make the motion and Ricky second it? Any further discussion? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
End of our report.
Mr. Cook, Nominations Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. The nominations committee has met on two occasions. First, we'd like to present a proposal to the council. The committee discussed the possibility of the council appointing the chairs and vice chairs for planning and zoning and the board of adjustment each year, rather than those being elected by the members of those boards. The, before you is a ordinance, amending and plant, the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment Officers to allow the city council to appoint the chairs and vice chairs, that'll be done on an annual basis, chairs and vice chairs of those, of the Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, I would move that we, the council, approve ordinance number 2020012, I guess it is, amending P and Z Board of Adjustment Officers.
Eric second?
Second.
Gerald makes the motion, Carla seconds it? Any further discussion?
Mayor, I, if I would, I, this concerns me, we have these particular boards set up and we fill them with volunteers, sometimes we have a difficult time filling them with volunteers. And, and we ask them to contribute their time, we ask them to be diligent in their service to us. And yet, it seems that we don't have enough confidence in them to elect their own chair. And, and troubles me that we want to dictate so much of how they run their board. There are policies in place that say how they're to be conducted and it has always worked in the past for them to elect their own chair and co-chair. And I think we're making, in my opinion, a mistake now to compel them to not only serve, but also to tell them how they're going to serve in such a manner that we must choose their chair and co-chair for them. And, and I find that, that to me indicates that, that we as a council feel like we want to be in complete charge of everything that happens and I don't think that's how the system was intended and I don't think that is how the system will function best with us at that level of involvement.
Any other discussion?
I would just add to that, we've made several changes, particularly to P and Z in the last couple of months. We've reduced the size, well, I guess a year or two ago, there was, there was term limits that were implemented. So I, I think some of the changes that we've, that we've made, we need to give a little bit of time to see what the effect of that is before we continue to make more changes. I know Mr. McClinton had, had some concerns about how that could affect us long-term or it could affect those boards long-term and I, I certainly agree with those. And further, in, in discussing some of these board mem, with some of these board members, whether or not they had a desire to serve as, as chairs or vice chairs, I've found that many of them didn't and, and I, I wouldn't be in favor of, of appointing someone who's And, and I, I wouldn't be in favor of, of appointing someone who's there as a volunteer to do something that they really don't want to do. Um, and so, but I think it may be best that those, that we allow those boards to continue to make those decisions.
Any others? Right now, we have Gerald has made the motion, Carl has seconded, approves ordinance number twenty, twenty, oh, twelve. Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed?
No.
Okay, we'll call, we'll call. Place one?
No.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
No.
Place four?
No.
Place five?
No.
Place six?
No.
Place seven?
Aye.
Place eight?
No.
Okay, motion, this time I counted right, there's eight votes and it's six, two. There you go. Motion fails.
Thank you, Ron.
That's a lot. Okay. So I guess then item three is moved then?
It is.
Okay.
And that's all of our-
Thank you, sir. Public Works Committee, Mr. Nix.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Public Works Committee also met that infamous night of the marathon meetings.
I was not in charge, you know that, don't you?
It was a marathon meeting.
You told us you could get this done in five minutes that night.
I did, I did my best, sir, but I, I was, I was handicapped considering who I had to work with.
And the committee is made up of-
True story.
Right. Okay. Mayor, uh, we had four items on our agenda that night. The first is a contract for, uh, the excavation, uh, of sales five and six at our current type-four landfill. Uh, we have a, uh, a bid from Hammett Excavation for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three fifty, fifty-three. That came in well under our budget of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Part of this is due to the fact that our staff with forced labor and our equipment has removed over a hundred thousand cubic yards of material from those two sales. Uh, the purpose, obviously, of opening these cells is extending the useful life of our landfill. Uh, and this will allow us to do that and continue in operation for a number of years into the future. This is an enterprise fund and this money has been budgeted. It was the pleasure of the committee to recommend positively to the council that this contract will be awarded to Hammett Excavation. And I would move at this time that we award that contract to them for, uh, the construction work at the landfill.
Second. Our next motion, Mark is, Mark seconded it, further discussion?
I, I just want to say that I think this is a, an example of our staff saving the citizens a hundred and fifty-something plus thousand dollars in the long run because of a good plan and a plan in place for long-term planning. So I would just like to say Nick, thank you to Nick for the long-term vision and planning. And that's conservative thinking, so I appreciate it.
Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
Second item on our agenda, Mayor, was also to do with the landfill. Uh, the state mandates that we have a, an agreement with an independent professional engineer-
Say that twice really fast.
Independent, independent, independent. To oversee the, the construction and to do the survey on the liner. Uh, the liner is a critical portion of the sale because it must be impermeable and it has to be a certain type of material which must be tested. It also has to be a certain thickness which has to be surveyed repeatedly and certified that it is what it is supposed to be. Uh, Mr. Williams was able to negotiate a professional services agreement, uh, with the firm, and I'm drawing a blank on the name of that firm. It is Riggs and Matthews. I apologize, uh, for an amount of sixty-three thousand dollars. And we're still with the two hundred and seventy-seven that we awarded. Plus this, we're still over a hundred thousand dollars under budget, which will be used for maintenance on equipment and, uh, construction of roads and future use at the landfill. I would make the motion that we, uh, move to agree to sign the, uh, professional services agreement with Biggs and Matthews for sixty-three thousand dollars.
I'll second. Our next motion, Mark seconded it, further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
Uh, next item on our agenda, uh, also relates to the landfill. It is a resolution which will cost us nothing, but it is a resolution asking for a grant from the North Central Texas Council of Governments. Uh, the, the grant would provide us the funding to do, uh, technical study and regional scope and impact to evaluate options and determine the most feasible path for future type-four waste disposal for the region. This is, this will help us significantly as we try to plan how to move forward with our landfill and as we plan for how to use, uh, the potential area that's on top of the existing type-one landfill. Uh, this is the, uh, ordinance that would fund, that actually authorizes us to apply for this grant from the North Central Texas Council of Governments. And it was the, uh, recommendation of the committee that we approved that. And I would make that motion that we approve that ordinance at this time.
It's a resolution versus an ordinance?
Resolution. It's a resolution, I beg your pardon, sorry. It is a resolution.
I'll second that resolution.
Our next motion, Mark seconded it. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
Last item on our agenda that night was, uh, an, an amendment to a contract that we have with Freez and Nichols. Freez and Nichols, Freez and Nichols has been doing a significant amount of our, uh, reviews for our, uh, plaits, traffic plans, traffic study site plans and engineering plans. Uh, they have the, the resources to continue to do this. And this extension will include some other areas, specifically stormwater and other things, because they have already been doing modeling for us and, and as a part of the other jobs, it is a not-to-exceed contract amount of, of twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, it was the will of the committee to recommend, uh, affirmatively that the council approve this contract extension with Freez and Nichols. Uh, and it would be my, I would make a motion that we extend, uh, the agreement with them uh, for not to exceed amount of twenty-four thousand dollars for the additional services.
Eric second.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
It was not a marathon, I don't-
Hmm.
Finance committee for it.
The report wasn't.
I wondered if you got all those unanimous votes because you kept dragging it out. So I said, just vote, just get it done. Never mind.
Excuse me, sir, Finance Committee, Matt?
Finance Committee.
Also on that marathon night, um, what was brought forward for Finance Committee to consider that, that evening was, uh, some budget adjustments. I do appreciate that Monica is bringing these to our attention on a very routine, in very routine manner, uh, so that we're not, uh, getting hit up with a bunch of these at, uh, at one time. Most of the, uh, budget adjustments that were brought forward were simply moving some money around within the budget from one area to another. There was a one-time item of ten thousand dollars that would impact the, uh, the, um, general fund surplus. And that is for tablets for the council. I think the decision has been made to maybe pass these tablets down to some of the other boards and commissions. And then council would receive new, the ten thousand dollars in this budget adjustment was for the new tablets, so that these can be passed on to Planning and Zoning B O A. Uh, all the other, uh, budget adjustments that were presented that night were budget neutral with no impact to the, to the budget. And, uh, unless there are questions, I would go ahead and move that we approve. That'll have to be done by ordinance. I believe.
Twenty, twenty-
Twenty, twenty, oh-
Twenty, twenty, oh, dash thirteen, is that what we got?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Second.
Uh, okay, I've already got twenty, twenty, oh, dash twelve written down. Did I miss something?
It didn't approve.
It's thirteen.
Thirteen, that's what I thought.
It didn't approve.
It is twelve. It is twelve. Or the one before did not pass. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. So twenty, twenty, dash, oh, dash twelve, which would be the amendments to the budget, as presented.
Any discussion? Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
That is the end of the Finance Committee report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Finance reports, Monica.
This is the budget report for December, which is, um, three months into our fiscal year. So we should be about twenty-five percent on most of our items. The, uh, financial indicators are what I would anticipate, or some of them are a little bit better. For property tax, we received two-point-four million in the month of December, which is a hundred and seventy-four thousand or six-point-one-seven percent over the funds collected through December last fiscal year. The three million collected through December is forty-seven percent of what we budgeted, which is consistent with our prior year's collections. For sales tax, we received five-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand in sales tax in December, which is thirty-seven thousand or two-point-two-seven percent over our target budget through December. We received fourteen thousand or point-eight-five percent more than the funds received last year through December. For our hot funds, we received twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars in revenue through December. Last year, um, was twenty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty. The next filing date for our report ending twelve thirty-one nineteen was, uh, January thirty-first. So we'll see more revenue with the next month's report. We spent six, sixty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-five in hotel occupancy tax funds through December as compared to thirty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight last year. The target budget for operating revenue is six-point-nine-seven million. We received eight-point-four million in revenue through December, which is one-point-four million over our target budget. This is a result of our property taxes, which are billed in October first and due by January thirty-first. And then we did have some insurance proceeds this year. The target budget for operating expenditures is five-point-two million. We expended five-point-four million through December, resulting in two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand over our target budget. This is because we pay, um, our annual, and we pay our insurance annually to save two percent. And we also have, um, several software maintenance agreements that come up the very first of the, the year, which are, uh, a hundred percent due. The operating revenue last year was seven-point-four million. The current year is eight-point-four million, which is a, a million-dollar increase. And that's because of service charges, insurance proceeds and property taxes. The operating expenditures last year were four-point-nine million. Um, the current year was five-point-four million, which is a five-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-dollar increase due to, um, wages and benefits, um, because of our pay plan that was approved, maintenance, utilities and then marketing for CEDO. For our new programs, the L-three camera replacements have been purchased for the police department. The downtown revitalization and the landfill sale projects are commencing. And the East Side Sewer project is still progressing. Because this is the end of a quarter, we also have an investment report. So our total market value of cash and investments on December thirty-third, twenty nineteen was thirty-four million, four-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. This is split eleven percent in demand accounts, eight percent in, eight percent in brokered certificates of deposit, sixty-one percent in tech star investment pool and twenty percent in the techs pool investment pool. We earned a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in interest for the quarter. The reason why the tech star investment pool is so heavy as compared to the other, um, investments is because that's where we have the money escrowed for the, um, East Side Sewer. The average yield to maturity for all of our account types for the quarter is one-point-five-three percent. Um, the average, uh, maturity for just the investment accounts without the, just checking accounts is one-point-eight percent. And our average yield to maturity for three-month treasury bill for the quarter was one-point-six percent. So we're on target, or a little bit above compared to our, um, investment policy. Any questions?
Any questions?
And we do need an, um, acceptance of the investment report.
Okay.
Do you want, you want me to make a motion? I move an acceptance of the investment report as presented.
Second. Carl makes the motion, Gerald seconds it. Further discussion? Just notice the amounts of money that the, whether it's stock market went up. How many, five-hundred points today? Four-hundred points today? It was up over five-hundred at one point. Too bad we can't get those kinds of investments on a return on. There you go. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, we accept your investment report. Thank you very much. City manager, oh, first of all, consent agenda.
Are we not going to have the economic development, that, you skipped?
I'm sorry, Economic Development Day has been pulled from the agenda, I apologize. Said that earlier. Consent agenda, or a motion?
Move to accept as, uh, presented.
Second. Mark makes the motion, Nick seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, consent agenda is accepted. Next item. Comments by city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the last day to file for a place on the May general election ballot is February the fourteenth at five P M. Our city offices will be closed for President's Day Monday, February the seventeenth. We'll have council committee meetings on the eighteenth. Uh, at this point, we have tentatively, and I stress the word tentatively, scheduled a community reception, uh, in meet and greet for Steve Killen and Dan Harris on February the twentieth. And the regular council meeting for March is March three.
Okay. Mark, comments?
Couple of things. First, we do have new faces in town. I want to, I want to welcome Mr. Killen and Chief Harris. Uh, certainly, welcome home, is what I would tell you. And, uh, expect great things from you. We're very fortunate indeed to have these two gentlemen working on behalf of the citizens of Stevensville. And we also had the change where Chief King, and I'm going to continue to call you Chief from time to time. It's a, it's a term of respect and, and you, you deserve it, sir. Uh, Jason has, he has changed and he is now full-time and one-hundred percent focused on his new assignment as A C M. But I, I just want to thank you for your decades of service, uh, to the citizens of Stevensville through the police department, from the very bottom level to the very top. You rock. And I thank you for your service, sir. And I'm expecting really good things now that you can focus on the A C M. We got a lot, we got a lot to do. We got a lot to do. And then I want to mention one more thing. I want to, I want to give a shout-out to a, a friend of this council who, for the last three years, has sat right there in that front chair. At every council meeting, I don't, I don't think he's missed a single one. Uh, David Whitman is his name. He's suffered a, a medical challenge. And he and his family, his wife Kathy and their extended family are in full recovery mode. And, uh, the council chambers do not look the same without David Whitman sitting here. So I just wish him thoughts and prayers as he recovers. And Brother Whitman? Get quick soon and resume your post, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There's a lot going on in the month of February. Last Monday night, we had, um, a candidate forum for local candidates at Bond Auditorium. This Monday night on February tenth, the, um, we will have a second forum. We had two-hundred people come to the last forum from the community. This time, you will get to meet the U S Congressional District eleven candidates for U S Congress, the justices for the Second Court of Appeals out of Eastland. And you will, um, be able to hear from the District fifty-nine candidates for the state representative position. That's at six-thirty at Bond Auditorium, Monday night. So we, we expect to have a good attendance, again, two-hundred people, that was good. On February eighteenth, our current United States Congressman is going to be in Stevenville at Agave and hold a rally at noon. And if you would like to come to that and see who represents you and introduce yourself and, and meet him, there's a taco bar, taco bar. So it's a, a close, personal time to meet your representative and talk to him, Roger Williams. On February twenty-fifth, we are really blessed that the governor's going to be in Stevenville. And the Republican Party is hosting him at Tarleton with a, a dinner. And he will be the featured speaker. If you're interested in actually meeting your governor on a person-to-person basis, see Kim Barrier at the courthouse for tickets. You can run by her office at the courthouse. And then the museum is starting a new series this spring, a spring music s- series. And it's called Pickers and Poets. The first one will be on Sunday, February ninth, which is this Sunday, no, next Sunday. This Sunday, gosh, February's going to be over. And Courtney Patton will be featured. It is a free event at the chapel on the museum grounds. Pickers and Poets, this Sunday, so kind of see Courtney Patton. And welcome to town. He didn't say that you're a Tarleton graduate and, and he wanted to get back to Stevenville, so we're glad to have him here.
Uh, welcome, Steve and, uh, and Chief Harris. I guess he's already taken his entourage out. So, uh, we're, we're glad to have both of you. I think, uh, if you, if you see the resumes of these two guys, of Chief Harris and of Steve Killen, you'll see that Stevenville is attracting some pretty incredible talent right now. And that's exciting. I'd also like to thank our county commissioners and much of the county staff, uh, that, uh, joined us in a joint work session, uh, this month. And, uh, that was, I think it was pretty productive. And it was exciting to see some discussions going on between the city and the county again. And I think that'll continue to get better. Um, and the last thing is, if you have to go anywhere tomorrow, be careful.
Also, welcome to you and Chief Harris. Look forward to working with you. Where did Karen go? Did she run away?
Karen was here.
I, I, I wanted to thank her because she's done such an outstanding job, uh, of filling in and learning, she has learned so much. She will be a valuable resource for you a- as you learn the positions. You bring so much to the position, but she can help you with, with the local details. And I think, I, I think she'll be a valuable resource for you and provide a lot of assistance. And, and I look forward to working with you and with her and the rest of our staff. I think you'll find that we've got a far above-average staff in the city of Stevensville at every level and every employee from the bottom to the top. And I think that's what makes Stevensville the good place that it is and, and the place that many of us have chosen to live and many more are, are choosing to move to.
many of us have chosen to live and many more are choosing to move to. Welcome to you.
Like to echo the very same thing. We're thrilled to have our two newest staff members on board for the city. It just raises the bar even more, and so we're glad to have you here. And we're looking for really great things. Shout-out to Jen, by the way. Jen, we had asked for copies of the plan for the entryways to the city and the way that was going to be done. She got it out to several of us on the council, and it looked really good. And thank you very much, Jen, for that and for your help. As you also know, that we've got a task force working on some facilities that'll be coming up. A lot of people on this, the people on this council, and we have some individuals in the community that have volunteered and are working hard on putting that together. And over the next few weeks, there will be surveys coming out and for people to return. You'll hear more and more about that, I think, as we go along. So Jen is staffing that, and the input, I think, is going to be really good, so that'll be super. So thank you all. And I might add a congratulations to the Dallas Texans for winning the Super Bowl.
Mr. Huckabee?
First off, welcome, Steve. We interviewed you a few months ago, and it's good to have you in town. And it's cool to see people, our last two hires, want to be in Stevensville, Texas. And it's just, it's a great place to be. There's a lot of good people. So I'm glad to have you here, ready to get to work. Lot of planning and developing, and let's get to rolling. And as we voted here tonight, a couple of things that we talked about as different council members, I've said in Allen, Mr. Barnes's office, and talked about things, and to see them go into fruition, a 2% tax on the hotel tax for revenue for our recreational facilities is long overdue. And it's a creative way to find things that needed to be done here. And so I appreciate staff's work and the council's work to make those things happen. Expanding the TIF to be on Harbin Road. I mean, the things that we're doing, it's exciting, it's fun. If you have questions, ask any of these people up here, and if we can talk about it, we will, and be involved. And last but not least, Spart has the Daddy Daughter Dance. I already have my tickets. On the 13th, down at the rec hall, there's going to be horse and buggy and carnations for the first 100 that come in, music, it's going to be catered, I believe. So if you're, if you got girls, they said it didn't matter how old they were. So all of, bring your girls if you're a dad. And, you know, just, it's a special time to spend with your family, and I appreciate Spart doing different activities for that. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Last week, Jason, Allen, myself, and Jeff, he's not here tonight, met with Dr. Hurley at Tarleton, and he gave us some insight into some things, some of the big picture of what Tarleton's going to be looking like and how that will affect Stevensville, Texas. It's exciting times. The financial impact on the city of Stevensville that Tarleton has is a tremendous one, both from sales tax and ad-borrow tax. And I want to just mention that people often say, well, Tarleton doesn't raise ad-borrow tax since they're a government entity. But I can tell you, a lot of people in this room up here, on this table up here, have rental properties that wouldn't be full if it weren't for Tarleton students being here. So they do affect the ad-borrow tax a lot. And with some of the things that they have coming, D1 will change the face of Stevensville, Texas. It will make a huge difference. And I want to say thank you to Dr. Hurley and Lon Reisman particularly for what's coming soon. And so with that, that's all I have. Therefore, in compliance with the provision of Texas Opens Meeting Law, Subchapter D and Government Code, Verans Texas Code, annotating accordance with Section 551071, consultation with attorney on pending litigation in Section 551.072. Deliberations by real property. We'll adjourn and come back here after we've...